He's a real sustainability guy and um he's done all sorts of work in field sustainability. I've got to ask him something.
What's your take?
Everything's.
Hey Paul.
What happened at KB? And you hear it? Did you see it?
No, what happened?
It burned down.
The one in Clackamas?
Yeah.
No way.
You're kidding.
Oh my god, I don't know if Rob knows about that.
What was it?
KB Recycling, used to be over there behind KB.
Yeah, I was in.
That's where my husband used to work.
Seattle for a conference, um and then uh San Jose.
Ben Williamson? Yeah.
Just roll something around and read all the license plates. So did you, did you hear that KB Recycling burned down?
That, the one that he was the advertising guy?
Totally torched on, what was it, Saturday?
Killed yourself.
Yep.
He had a long depression.
Well, it looked like, I mean there was smoke pouring out everywhere.
Drugs.
Of all the vents.
Just supposed to act.
Yeah.
Okay. The planning commission meeting for Monday, August 11th, 2014 is called to order. Are there any public comments on items not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we will proceed to the public hearing. And the first item on the agenda is a proposed thirty-one-bed assisted living memory care facility located at 950 South End Road. Planning file CU fourteen dash zero one. Conditional use SP fourteen dash oh nine. Site plan and design review. VR fourteen dash oh one variance and LL fourteen dash zero five property line adjustment. I will read a prepared script of the procedures for this quasi judicial hearing this evening. For the public hearing on this land use application, a staff report has been prepared and made available to the public seven days before the public hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. The quasi judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart on the wall which will be followed. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Speakers will proceed in the order in which their card is received. You should fill out your address on the card so the city will notify you of its final decision. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person may submit any written materials while the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by the city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, oversized poster boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to the city staff while the record is open. If they are not given to staff, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence or testimony or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the consideration of the city commission or Luba or both. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be deemed appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. For each, for this public hearing, we'll now open the record. Does any commissioner have any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, bias, or any other statement to declare? And has any commissioner visited the site?
I have visited the site since the last hearing.
Same.
I've also visited the site.
I have nothing to declare and I have not visited the site. Does anyone in the audience have any questions for the commissioners of their declarations? Seeing none, we will commence then first with the planning staff report.
Thank you Chair Kidwell. I have thirty slides and I'm going to try to keep my presentation to fifteen minutes including questions and answers. So I'm going to go fairly quickly and we'll start it up. The hearing for this application was continued from July fourteenth. We have prepared a staff report for tonight's hearing which is part of the record. First wanted to show you the site on an aerial photograph from 2013. Site in the middle consists of the main tax lot which is 950 South End Road and then a strip of land that abuts the area on Amanda Court and a small strip triangular wedge of land which is part of the same tax lot that abuts the property on the west side. So both property owners have signed the land use application. The strip of land on the south side of the property on Amanda Court is the area that's proposed primarily for street improvements. Site was occupied by single-family residents which was demolished and currently there are trees on the site. There has been some clearing and other initial prep work, but nothing lately. Zoning of the site is all exclusively R-ten, abutting the property. Farther south on South End Road at the intersection of Lawton and Warner Parrot, you have a townhome subdivision which is zoned MUC one. The applicant submitted a graphic rendering of the front of the site this afternoon, so I've included that picture in the PowerPoint which indicates how the site would look from the front from South End Road. Consists of the main entrance facing South End Road with a port cochere, I think that's how you say that.
Yep. Look at the chair.
And this is the item for which a variance is requested because the building is being reviewed against our institutional and commercial building design standards which require that a building be placed no further than five feet from the minor arterial road, South End Road. And if a larger setback is requested, then it has to be pedestrian amenity area. And so the item in question being the vehicle drive aisle required a variance in order to accommodate this particular use. And staff is supportive of the variance, so I'll talk about that later. The additional area in the front yard setback would be taken up by one disabled van parking space on the north side of the port cochere landscaping and six to seven additional pedestrian amenity items which are described in the planning, in the planning staff report. Consisting of cobbled areas, a water fountain feature, enhanced landscaping and other features. The South End Road and Amanda Court elevations are the ones which face the public street. So Amanda Court is a local street and the elevation that's shown on the bottom of this slide is the Amanda Court elevation. You can see the carport on the right side and the bulk of the, the main bulk of the building is on the eastern third of the site. So I'll talk about the height differences there in a little bit. The remaining portions of the back of the building consist of the rooms and facilities for the residents. So there, that's kind of how it would look from Amanda Court. The main bulk of the building visible from South End Road would have a roofline elevation at the very top of twenty-eight feet. And the roofline elevation for the one-story portions of the bedrooms and residences is eighteen feet to the roofline. The zone district that they're in, R-ten zone, allows a maximum building height of thirty-five feet. And our code allows us to measure a pitched roof at the point between the peak and the eve, so that works out to about twenty-three feet for the building height overall. This slide shows the north and west elevations. So the north or right side is the one that would be the interior lot lane facing north. And the rear elevation is the one that would face the abutting residence to the rear. And on the rear, there's approximately a sixty-foot setback, but within that setback area, there will be a six-space parking lot as well as an additional rear garden area and landscaping and a walkway around the building itself. The applicant did submit a revised site plan for the public works engineers to be able to show that the onsite stormwater detention could be accommodated without encroaching on the area proposed for the parking lot. And the rear parking lot area is shown in this slide as six spaces. So seven spaces proposed onsite for off-street parking and that's the maximum allowed by the code for a thirty-one-bed facility. And this is a, the full site plan slide that we had at the time of the staff report. Shows the location of the driveway that would enter the site from South End Road approximately a hundred and four, a hundred feet north of the intersection with Amanda Court. And then that driveway would exit out onto Amanda Court approximately forty feet west of the intersection with South End Road. And John Replinger, a traffic engineer, has looked at that and determined that is a safe location. He is recommending though that parking within a hundred feet of the intersection along Amanda Court on the street be restricted. And so that's fairly easy to accommodate with a no parking sign. With full dedication of local street on that section, it would accommodate parking on both sides of the street. The parking would be limited to the remaining hundred and forty feet of available curb on the north side of Amanda Court for use by anyone who wanted to use it, not just the people at the facility, since it's a public street. The location of the exit from the rear parking lot is located so as not to interfere with site distance along Amanda Court and so that people entering onto Amanda Court from other streets can have adequate site distance before cars enter out onto the street. And the parking lot was designed to be able to allow backing, within the site and not backing into the, into the public right-of-way. So that was a safety consideration. With respect to the tree removal that has occurred on site, we have a partial site plan indicating the locations of the trees that were removed. And then this plan set that was submitted with the application indicating approximately twenty-five trees are proposed for removal on the site as a condition of approval. Staff is recommending that we have a complete count of what is proposed and to the extent that we can get diameter information on all of those trees that were removed and the ones that will be removed, we will require mitigation in accordance with city code option one.
Do we have that information?
Not yet. Our review criteria specified here, they are also listed on our public notices. They include the conditional use code, our site plan and design review code, our variance code, our streets sidewalks and public places code, our public and street trees code, stormwater management, grading, filling and excavating, property line adjustment and abandonment. The base zone district of R-ten, so the, with the exception of the setback on South End Road, all of these base zone, actually all of these base zone setbacks will be met. The tree protection standards, our administration and procedures, our off-street parking and loading and our supplemental zoning regulations and exceptions which primarily apply to fences in this case. Proposed use qualifies as a conditional use in the R-ten single-family dwelling district as an assisted living facility for over fifteen patients. A separate license from Oregon Department of Human Services is also required and the city doesn't issue that, they do. With your application, the city attorney Jennifer Brager has included a memorandum which talks about how we should be reviewing uses such as this and how we apply the review criteria. And at the end of that memorandum, which Jennifer's going to talk about tonight in a little bit of detail, are four considerations. So what is the planning commission being asked to consider? And with respect to the impact on the adjacent neighborhood? What is the nature of the proposal and the likely off-site impacts resulting from the proposed use? Is the facility designed or is the massing arranged so as to reflect single-family design principles? Is the facility sited on the property so as to provide appropriate buffers as a transition to this non-single-family use? And is the traffic generation anticipated from this development comparable with single-family development given the available parking and size of gathering spaces or common areas? So it is a thirty-one-bed facility on a point-nine-one acre parcel. It's about thirty-one thousand square feet. Building footprint of approximately fifteen thousand square feet with approximately thirteen thousand square feet of landscaping onsite. Seven onsite spaces as I mentioned. It involves consolidation of the two lots, abutting Amanda Court. Traffic impact was documented in two reports, an initial report and a supplementary report. Both reports were reviewed by our, John Replinger. For a facility of this type, it's expected that there would be eighty-two daily trips. Four peak hour trips in the morning and seven peak hour trips in the evening. The residents would not own cars in this situation, so most of the traffic generation would be due to guests and visitors and staff. Also, it includes room for additional six on-street parking spaces which are for the use of the general public. The applicant requested a variance to setback the building thirty-one feet from the front property line and place the vehicle drive aisle at the front. And that's documented in the code citations on page seventy-three of the staff report. The factors that support the proposed variance, and I'm not going through the code here, I'm summarizing. A one-way access only, only via South End would be to preserve the capacity and safety of the South End Road as a minor arterial corridor. There would be no direct access from the site to South End, so that's a mitigating factor. The residents require a temporary protected loading and unloading facility at the front entrance doors due to disabilities. There's also need for quick emergency access since all the exit doors are locked on the side and rear of the facilities. Driveway has been narrowed to one lane to limit paving and parking and a variety of mitigation features has been proposed such as the outdoor cafe seating area, paving, lighting, water features, landscaping and various architectural elements. And we did go through the comprehensive plan goals and policies for the variance request as well as for the conditional use. What mitigation is proposed for the conditional use? Couple of features that would fit in with the adjacent neighborhood including complying with residential dimensional standards and uses for residential materials. Main bulk of the building is located on the eastern third of the lot away from the adjacent residential area at the rear. There would be a six-foot high fence on the north and west side, significant landscaping in and around the edges of the site including, in addition to the, the street and, street trees and street buffers associated with the planter strip. Adequate off-street parking being provided and new public improvements along both frontages for Amanda Court and South End Road with street trees. Staff suggests the following condition of approval, a good neighbor agreement similar to ones that have been proposed in the past which allowed, and we'll talk about that. And we did not include this, this is a holdover from a previous slide, so ignore that. There are no exterior stairwells proposed. The revisions to the application that are submitted are the stormwater onsite storing tank plan, storage tank plan and the addition of a six parking space at the rear of the site. So the options for the commission, this does not involve a non-conforming use application.
Yeah, just, just take, yeah, thank you, that'd be good.
And apologize for that. Comprehensive plan goals and policies are all fairly similar. We have a citizen involvement requirements and policies. How the land use goals and policies being met, efficient use of the site, night sky noise mitigation, light pollution, all of these things that we reviewed in detail in the staff report. Promotion of isolation of income groups within communities by encouraging diversity in housing types. We also support the development of an undeveloped, underdeveloped parcel within the city limit where facilities are available. The minor arterial road, South End Road, is also designated as a, as a transit corridor in our transportation system plan. And although it's not currently served by TriMet, our principal provider of transit in this area, it has the potential to be reopened for that use. As well as the Pioneer Community Center also serves seniors in our community and would be able to use the driveway on the site if, if it is built to be able to pick up and drop off people. In terms of land use connection to transportation system, we want to promote walkable neighborhoods along our minor arterial corridors. The area south of this site has been developed already with a full street section at the intersection of Lawton Road. And that reflects what the applicant has proposed. It would connect eventually to a more, a more connected pedestrian system along South End Road by providing the street improvements here. And it also provides an option for people living in the community and to enjoy the sidewalk as well. About the good neighbor agreement, it's a standard template that we've used in the past to settle any concerns that might result as a impact on the adjacent neighborhood, whether it be parking or noise or something like that. We do not anticipate that there would be a great deal of noise or issues associated with this use. But should some arrive out of the approval of this, the good neighbor agreement provides points of contact and meaningful communication between the two parties and provides a basis to resolve problems in the future. This was done for Ministry in McLaughlin neighborhood which serves up to a hundred people to attend workshops. And they did do a good neighbor agreement and also for the House of Hope which was a residential boarding school, three to five girls in the R-ten zone. Staff has not previously recommended a good neighbor agreement for an assisted living facility of this type, but we are recommending it in this case. And if the good neighbor agreement is not recorded within a certain amount of time based on one or both parties not deciding to follow through with it, it would not be binding. Here's some sample provisions from a good neighbor agreement to honor all city regulations relating to noise and nuisance, to continually monitor parking, to assure that staff, participants and visitors park only in approved parking spaces, to assist in minimizing related negative impacts in the surrounding residential area and providing notice to adjacent neighbors of larger activities and to provide points of contact. Another part of the staff report that we wanted to provide some comparisons for is the density concerns that may come out of having thirty-one-bed assisted living facility on the site. Just for comparison's sake, the number of dens, the average density per acre would be thirty-one in comparison to five-point-five or five residents per acre in the adjacent block group from the 2010 census. We did do a comparison for the subject site based on average household size, but the area that we're including for the census block calculation is extremely large, so it, you know, take that with a big grain of salt. Comparing apples to oranges really. And the Oregon City Municipal Code has no explicit limitations in overall density in the R-ten zone. Another way to look at this is if there were three single-family homes built on the site with an average of two-point-six people per dwelling which would be comparable to eight people per, for the whole site. And so it's slightly more than that with, with the proposal. Thirty-one people for one dwelling as opposed to eight people for one, one large dwelling. What mitigations to density are proposed? Traffic, residents don't own cars. Transportation impact is estimated to be fairly small. There's limited access to the site. Public improvements to both South End Road which is a transit street and Amanda Court. Extensive landscaping, building is by the nature of the use locked for security. There's a six-foot fence around the site, abutting residences. Visually, the structures are single-story, two stories at the front of the site utilizing residential building materials and standard use nearby. And it complies with the horizontal and vertical articulation requirements in the city code for an institutional and commercial building. And we have recommended a good neighbor agreement as well. If we were to do a little bit more analysis and compare this building against our residential design standards, which I did not do, I would be fairly sure that it could comply because those are primarily a garage, garage requirement that, and this does not have any garages associated with it. So we would primarily be looking at windows, doors, materials and those sorts of things. And there are many, many options architecturally for a residential building, particularly one which does not have a garage or garages abutting or fronting on the street. which does not have a garage or garages abutting or fronting on the street. Staff recommendation is approval with conditions. This PowerPoint presentation to enter into the record and the 3D rendering, which I showed earlier, which was received from the applicant today at 3:30.
Is that different from the rendering that we previously received? Because it doesn't look like it.
Yeah, it's a little bit different because it has the driveway shown as curved, I believe, and a little more workup on the landscaping, so.
Those trees look awfully small.
The trees in the front are the street trees.
Yeah, they're awfully small.
So, as you can see on the front, the proposal is to use tree wells in the planter strip rather than an actual strip, which complies with our transportation plan and would allow for a fairly sizable tree in there along that section of road. And then inside of the property line, which is where you see the beds, which are onsite landscaping, that's additional buffering between the building and the street. Are there any aspects of my presentation you'd like clarification on or regarding the staff report? Questions?
Can you go to the traffic or the parking slide, the one of the, so?
I'll go to the new one. This is the, this is what we received most recently.
Okay, so this still only shows five parking spots in the back.
There's one.
One, two, three, four, five, one, two, three.
Isn't there something right here?
Oh, okay.
There's one there.
I know, but you keep talking about six in the back, and there's not six in the back.
Okay, it's mistaken.
There used to be four in the back.
Used to be four and it went to?
To five.
So now they've added one to make it five, and they've eliminated the ones that were an option on the west side?
The west side option was not recommended by the traffic engineer.
Yeah, because I was always head in and back out.
Right.
They've eliminated that. So it appears on this that there's two spaces in front rather than one.
Yeah, one ADA and one generic.
Yeah, it does.
So the total adds up to the same number, but it's two in front.
I was under the impression it was one in the front and six in the back, but we should ask the applicant to clarify that.
Okay, and in this one strip that's under a separate ownership?
Yeah.
Is there going to be anything in that, or is that going to be empty, or is there going to be open space, or what's going to happen?
Well, there's about two foot of additional dedication occurring from that strip, so it's primarily going to be taken up by the planter strip and curb, is my expectation.
How wide is the sidewalk, how high does the sidewalk here?
Five feet on Amanda Court, and then over here on South End, it would be.
Not six?
Pardon?
Not six?
On Amanda?
Yeah.
No, I believe five is.
Okay.
And then 10-foot with tree wells over here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Pete, I'm assuming you meant on the front elevation there will be a space for a handicap accessible van spot?
Right.
Not a disabled van?
Correct.
Because I don't think they want any disabled vans in the, yeah, disabled vans in the front there.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay, it made me smile, so, thank you.
It was poor to say vans.
Can you go to the tree plan?
That is very hard to see on this screen.
Yes.
The ones with lines zoom are the ones being proposed to be removed or already have been?
We don't, we don't.
We don't know which ones have already been removed.
We asked them to, they were asked to submit that.
Because I see at the very least tree three and four in the lower corner, lower right-hand corner.
Why would they have to be removed?
Seem to be, you know, appropriate, they're inside the landscaping strip, so I'm not sure. Based on this, it looks like every tree on the property is coming down, and all those on the back side, I see no reason to come down.
I don't either.
Yeah, oh, there's, well, or is that a manhole?
It's, under the current code, that's okay, but the number of mitigation trees is higher. There's no explicit requirement to preserve trees on a site that are outside of a building envelope, but the planning commission has discretion in this case.
I thought we were very clear last meeting that we wanted to see a lot of the trees remain.
Well, we can certainly craft a condition of approval that deals with that.
Because, you know, we need all the, we need all the trees to help us with global warming that we can, and it makes no sense to cut down trees that don't need to be cut down to plant trees that are small that will take a really long time to grow.
And to add to that, I guess I'd want to at least see where the mitigation trees would go, because the site's being occupied by a lot of development, and I think that we might be in a situation where mitigation trees that they'd be required to do would have to go elsewhere, or would be bunched in a site in an area of the development site that would not be very effective. So, I mean, I guess what I'm moving towards is, you know, a wider buffer on the north and maybe some additional mitigation trees in that location, but I don't want to cut all my secrets.
The way we've, we've kind of written the condition of approval to make very clear that mitigation trees are going to be separately pointed out on a mitigation plan, landscaping trees accounted separately on a separate plan set.
So that would be handled in the design review part of it?
Yeah, but we can tweak that condition of approval.
Right.
I think what I hear us saying is that we really wanted to see that, and I guess I had anticipated that we would get that at this hearing.
Because the quick summary is older trees are better trees.
Yes.
The new trees will never catch up with the older trees, you know, growth, that's for sure. Pete, I just would like you to clarify on the slide that was titled mitigation something.
That one, we were just looking at it.
Yeah.
Please talk about the stormwater mitigation?
What mitigation is proposed, which, the second item on there doesn't make any sense to me at all.
Okay.
The main bulk of the building is located in the eastern third of the lot. Now, if you said it was in the eastern two-thirds of the lot, that would make sense to me.
Well, I think he's referring to the second-story portion, which is the bulkier half of the building.
That's what I mean, the highest portion of the building.
The highest portion, okay. You know, from a footprint of the building standpoint.
Oh, okay, I see what you, yeah.
The building takes up at least two-thirds of the width of the site, probably much more than that.
Yeah, we can see that. So the two-story portion of the building is where the lounge area is and the office.
Right, but the two-story portion is at the south end of the site?
No, east end.
That eastern side.
This is north.
Oh, that's north.
North, yeah.
I got you.
It's South End Road, but it's still north.
Okay, I was orienting myself with north that way. Okay, I hear you. Plus it goes east-west.
Where's the north arrow on this plan? I can't accept this plan because it has no north arrow on it.
Without a key.
I just wanted to follow up on Paul's question, because it was also, it's also my question with regard to the testimony that we had last time, one of the property owners had requested a continuance, and has all of that been resolved, or what's going on, I guess, is, I don't see them, they're not in the audience, I don't think, so.
Yeah, the Synthirages requested that the record may be maintained.
May, open, okay.
Yeah, that was the request, and so my response in writing and at the hearing was that until the planning commission closes the record.
It's still open, yeah. Then there was a second property owner?
Yeah, thank you. The tax lot that the Synthirages own is sort of an L-shaped piece, you can.
Go back, yeah.
That's Southern Strip, yeah.
See it here.
Is the one below the star?
Yeah, it's both, both this and this.
This, okay.
And this little triangular piece is really, it's not part of the site plan. And isn't necessary in order for the improvements along Amanda Court to be done. If the property owner withdraws their signature from the application, then the application can't proceed, because those are code requirements and they're a needed part of the application. That being said, I believe the third property owner on this portion of the, over here, would like to negotiate for the sale of that portion of property, but that is, that could be done outside of this application. If the property line between this strip and this property is abandoned through a type one process, it would leave this parcel left over for a future lot line adjustment in order to become part of that, that portion of the property for whatever use is allowable there.
Okay, so let me clarify, because I think I just got confused. So you're saying that the little triangle piece that I can see.
Tree.
Is not part of the site plan, but yet you said it's necessary for the application?
Well, the southern.
The southern portion of that L-shaped.
Okay, yeah, that part I understand.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the triangle piece, is that, is that still owned by the same people that own the strip?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And it looks like the trees that are being proposed to be removed are actually in the triangle.
No, I don't believe so, because the site plan only extends to the, this portion of the property.
I think you, there are some of them, they had little lines through them, I think you're right.
Yeah, I think if you go back to the.
We can ask the applicant to clarify that. I don't think they're planning on removing those trees.
Yeah, they are.
Wait, wait, yeah.
Well, so this is a straight line?
They're showing them at the back of their property line, but those trees in the other site plan are shown in the triangle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So again, we need a tree plan.
I think that needs to get resolved.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think the adjacent, that adjacent property owner had some concerns because some of their trees were removed, and when I went out there again, I looked at that, and yes, there was some disturbance on their property from what I could see from the street. At least the canopy's in there, according to the aerial, but.
Effective buffer.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Well, yeah, I think if that is on the other tax lot, then that is a concern, and the Synthirages would make the call on that, so.
Sure, Goodwell, and commissioners, if I could take a few minutes to talk through the city attorney's memo before we open the public hearing? I just wanted to remind you, and we've been through this before, where a project is proposed as a conditional use that is protected under federal housing laws, and this project involving an assisted living facility does include people with disabilities that are protected under the ADA and the Fair Housing Act and the Rehabilitation Act, and so I do want to remind you that in land use matters, these acts do provide some protections to ensure that the commission treats them the same as any other applicant, so the discussion you've been having tonight is completely on par with that. You're talking about conditional use criteria and applying the criteria without any notice about who the people that are going to be living in the facility are, and that is what the Fair Housing Act protects people from. In addition, we have a section on page three that talks about applying the code neutrally, and Pete included a list of our recommendations and shows the last four bullet points, and I just want to remind you that should the planning commission make a decision that differs from the staff report, that staff really needs.
Specifics.
Specifics from the planning commission about why they're making their decision so that findings can be drafted accordingly, but, and you can use these recommendations as sort of a guidance to that discussion should you get there. And with that, I can turn it back over to you and ask if anyone has any questions about the Fair Housing Act and ADA.
So you've used my favorite terms, that we're going to create findings that have sufficient specificity, right?
Right.
Does anyone have any questions for the city attorney?
Nope.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
Not at this point.
Okay.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you, Pete. So then, at this time, we'll hear from the applicant.
Oh, yeah, just give it to him.
Well, good evening, my name is Petronella Donovan, and I am the applicant for this assisted living memory care facility. I just, I think we've answered, I mean, talked about it the first time that we were here, I don't know if there's any questions for me, but I just want to say a little bit about what this facility is and what it means to me. I have been doing adult care, gosh, for long-term care now for, I don't know, maybe 20 years, and I've been with the elderly and love what I do. In the state of Oregon, we don't have enough beds. As we all know, the baby boomers are coming, and there's not enough places to have these elders go into. I have an adult care home right around the corner from this facility where I am full and actually have a waiting list on that want to come into our facility. My reasoning for this was because it was right around the corner to have it right here in Oregon City, and I just wanted to say I love Oregon City, this is where I graduated from, and, you know, I wanted to remain in the city that needs it. I just wanted to reiterate, one of, one of my patients was Dr. Perch's wife, and he was to visit me every single day, and if you don't know Dr. Perch, he's the founder of Willamette Falls Hospital.
One of the.
One of the founders, yes, one of the founders of Willamette Falls Hospital, and he always used to say, "Petronella, why don't we just go back to the good old days?" And he goes, "I used to get paid in chickens and eggs," and I go, "That was probably one of the first AGMOs." What we want to, you know, have here is a facility that people can call home, that's clean and it's safe. You know, it's hard to have dementia, the hardest thing that probably any loved one would have is to place their loved one somewhere. They're going to have all kinds of questions, but I want to be able to say that, you know what, this is home for you. I don't want a bigger facility, 100-bed, a 200-bed facility, I want it something that is manageable, and that I've wanted it right here in my town where I grew up. So I'm going to take any questions if there are, I really love Oregon City, this is where I want it to be able to do our facility.
Mrs. Donovan, I certainly appreciate your sincerity and your commitment. What I'm really primarily interested in is the application and involving the standards and criteria that we've asked your consultants to help you meet, and so I'm interested in how you, you heard some of our comments to staff, so that's really what I'm kind of interested in having you respond to.
Okay, and Eddie's our architect, and he can answer those.
I wanted to address, my name's Edward Radulescu, last name spelled R-A-D-U-L-E-S-C-U. Wanted to talk a little bit about some of the questions that came up primarily regarding the trees. There is a landscape plan that was, it was on the slide last time, I didn't see it on it this time, but it was submitted with the application that shows the amount of trees that we're providing as part of our mitigation. There's a total of 53 trees that are going to go along the perimeter and throughout the site. There's going to be a minimum of one tree for every 30 feet along all four sides of the site perimeter, along with the six-foot fence and a landscape hedge that's going to go along the two sides where they abut neighboring properties. Also, there is an arborist report that was submitted in the application, it talks about all the trees that were recommended for removal. It talks about all the trees that were recommended for removal. All of the trees that are removed that are outside of the footprint are being removed because of the arborist's recommendations. And then, to the best of my, my knowledge, I have to go back and double-check, but the trees that are along the west property line there that were in question, there's four trees that aren't very large that are actually on the property. The other ones that are on that little triangular piece, to the best of my knowledge, were not removed and won't be, they're not part of the application and won't, nothing in that area will be touched.
So you're planning to make sure you have adequate protection of those as you come along that property line?
Yeah, we'll have a, well, the arborist made recommendations for root protection and tree protection for whatever trees remain on-site. And part of that protection would be a six-foot chain-link fence that needs to be put around the tree at a certain distance so equipment and people don't get in there.
One of my biggest concerns with this project is, is onsite parking. We're looking at 82 trip generations a day, that seems to be significantly more than seven onsite parking spots. I know there's the six street spots, but I have a real problem with that because, for one thing, we run into it here around Seventh Street, is everybody who has a business counts the same spot, and that math doesn't always add up. Additionally, it has, you know, if you have a large event, you know, like, you know, Easter or whatever, it could very easily end up filling things up, so I appreciate that you, you added one spot. But I guess my question is, is why isn't, like, the whole back end parking, it just seems like, you know, granted, I know you get the whole impervious surface, blah, 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 but, but the fact of the matter is, it looks to me like you could put about 12 spaces back there, which would mean that a third of your residents could have visitors, which is, seems to be a reasonable assumption. There would still be those six off-street spots, which would then mean you'd have more than half of your residents would have parking, or visitors would have parking. So, that's my question, is why isn't, not, why is more onsite parking not being proposed?
We've looked at a couple different options regarding parking. The main reason why there aren't more than seven is just primarily because the code requires minimum of five spaces for the number of beds that we have and a maximum of seven parking spaces on-site. We have, we've provided the maximum. We haven't really explored where would we, where, I mean, things like impervious area can be dealt with in
Yeah, you just put down open levers or whatever.
But we haven't explored what the process would be or what it would take to go over the maximum allowed of seven spaces.
I think that based on the, the testimony that we had last time, that that, you know, that would have been like, okay, we need to check that out. The, I just want to get back to the trees one more time. We, we have not seen the arborist's report. What we are strongly suggesting is that you make an effort to maintain as many existing trees on the site as possible. I thought we were pretty clear last time that we really wanted you to do that. That's, you know, 53 trees sounds like a lot, but again, if they're two-inch caliper, as Charles said, they don't take the place of the, and Damon said, they don't take the place of an existing tree. And there are a lot of nice trees on that site. So I would really, again, going to emphasize this again, we would like to see the plan that you are, you were asked to submit by staff that shows what was removed, what's proposed and all that, so we can, we really, you know, we're asking, you're asking us to do a site plan and design review, and we can't do that if we don't have all of the information. And I know some of us are, you know, we like trees, because we're a tree city, and we really should try to maintain as many of the existing trees as we have, so we can keep our fabulous award. I think that's wonderful that we have been able to do that.
Well, along the same line, I, I guess, one of the questions I have is that it, it appears that you're using the street trees to offset the, the trees that are being removed.
You can't, I don't think you can do that by the code.
And I don't think you can count those toward your mitigation of tree removal.
Yeah, I don't think you were doing that.
They're not counted towards that, those are just the requi, we have to provide a certain amount of street trees for every lineal feat.
I, I say that because you, you mentioned the, the street trees at 30 feet on center.
Yeah.
Okay, I meant perimeter trees on the site, that are on the site.
On the site, okay. So are, are you looking on the, the south side of the site, in that large landscaped area, to have?
There won't be trees there, shrubs, yeah.
Yeah, I, I just, before I say anymore, I'll see if anybody else has anything on the tree.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
So I guess the other thing that I had written down, I, I tend to take a lot of notes at our meetings, and a couple of things I had down from last time is that we talked a little bit about the design, and part of the conditional use permit criteria talks about the compatibility of the design fitting in with the adjacent residential area. And that's why I spent some more time going there and looking at kind of what was nearby and so forth. And I think one of the things we talked about last time was that we wanted to see something that was less commercial-looking and more residential-looking.
Northwest traditional, I think, is what we.
Yes, I think, yes. And then we talked about, one of the things that's very helpful is that you've got your building and the nice thing that you, the nice drawing you submitted, the only thing I saw lacking on that was, what does that building look like in the context of its adjacent neighbors? What does that look like? You know, here's the house to the left, here's the house to the right. What's the scale? How does that look? And I had written that down in my notes that I had, had asked your colleague if that would be possible to have that for this meeting so that we could get a better idea. Because again, that relates directly back to one of the criteria that talks about the massing, the scale.
In particular, the one to the north, because that is adjacent, there's a road and everything to the south, which separates that massing, but definitely the, what you would see going down South End Road, if you see, little cottage, huge building, little cottage, it is inappropriate.
And I, I think, you know, going back to what Denise was talking about that we discussed last time, and I know she asked the question whether there was any room to reduce the number of beds in this facility and still make it a viable facility, because that's actually my biggest concern, even more so than the trees, is that this facility appears to be very bulky. And the, the, the building is taking up such a huge portion of the site, it just, the, the scale of it is, is not really consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. Even if the surrounding neighborhood was built to maximum density, it would still overwhelm the adjacent neighborhood. So I, I was kind of looking for some response to the comments we had in that regard last time, that number one, the scale, the mass of the building, and number two, the architectural style is really not consistent with the neighborhood.
Sure, Goodwill, I think we also heard a lot of testimony on impacts of the building visually and, and the proximity of the building, and I was just wondering what the applicants did to change the site plan to accommodate for that. What, what sort of things are you guys going to do to? Because I think just about everybody that testified was concerned, or most people that testified were concerned about buffering and separation between the building and, and the existing sites.
Well, we've provided, for example, on the west side, we have a 60-plus-foot setback there that, minus the parking area, was going to be part of our sort of heavier landscaping to create a landscape buffer for that neighbor. The 10-foot to 13-foot buffer to the north side for that neighbor, we were just providing additional landscaping there for that screening and, as well as the six-foot site obscuring fence. Also, the reason the building is, there's no living units on a second floor, there's no windows overlooking into a, a neighbor's property, because the, the building could, could be split into two floors. If we provide an elevator and they would be limited to providing care for memory care patients only on the first floor. The second floor would have to be care for patients who didn't require memory-type care. So that's one issue with that. The second issue with going two-story would be to the neighbor to the north, there would be windows overlooking the property. We thought that by keeping it one level, at least their privacy is kept intact in that way, and it provided additional screening from, from that neighbor.
What's going to be on the second floor?
The second floor, the dining space is just a higher ceiling, and same with the entry lobby area. So it gives the appearance of a two-story building. And then in the center of that, there are some staff offices, and the only two windows that are from those spaces overlook South End Road.
So is that a full second floor or it's a mezzanine? Because I, I, I guess, in trying to get what everybody else is talking about is, I'd really like to see you bring that down, that, that the port of cachere is just so massive and so overwhelming. And I really want to suggest that, you know, Oregon City is built on basalt. And so, one of the things that was bugging me and looking, and I'll just be honest, is that the type of stone you have proposed, that, you don't find that around here.
I just want to comment on that.
So anyway, so I, I'd like to suggest is, was suggested by someone else, that you look at native materials or northwest materials, because that, I've seen a lot of that particular type of, it's very suburban, it's very California, and you see a lot of it in California, you see a lot of it in Arizona. Because there's a place right near my parents' house that's got that very same. Matter of fact, I think it's the same stuff that's on the Subaru dealership downtown, Oregon City. And I know when Portland reviewed the same Subaru dealer design, they had them change it to something that was more Portland and Pacific Northwest, and they did. And the, the owner of that facility wanted that, as opposed to the Subaru stone, because it's, again, it's very Arizona, very not northwest. Like I said, Oregon City sits on a big bench of basalt. And I know you can buy the thin little strips that make, would make it look a little bit more northwest.
But you're not only talking about the materials, but you're also talking about the architectural style, right?
Yes, yeah, it just, it, it just needs to come down a little bit. It just, it's just very massive. I, I don't think that you're hearing any of us say that we don't think that you should build a memory care facility. We're getting into the site plan and design review, and that's kind of where the rubber meets the road. And I thought we'd given you a lot of suggestions at the last meeting, and I'm sorry if that wasn't clear enough, that we really wanted to see some revisions.
Make my comment?
Please.
Okay, what, our house right around the corner is, has that, that brick.
I noticed that.
And it's, we thought it was nice, and we, I go, oh my gosh, if we can, and I don't know how many people has complimented us.
It's, it's kind of beside the point. We're talking about a different area in an R-10 residential neighborhood, is that zone commercial over there?
No, it's not.
What, what's it zoned over there?
Ah, gosh, when we, when we built, it was R-10, yeah.
Yeah, it's not surrounded by a whole bunch of other houses.
Right, but I, I think that the key here is.
Yeah, talk about this application.
We're talking about a building that's 15,000 square foot footprint versus a house that, a, a typical house would probably be less than a fourth of that footprint. So, it, it's, it's not just the style, although the style's a big part of it, it's the mass of the building itself. Architecturally, you could take this size building and treat it in a way that didn't look like a big massive building. I, I'm an architect, so I know that you can do that. But that has not been done, there's been no effort to break the building up so that it doesn't read as one gigantic building.
Has, have there been any feasibility considerations for less, I mean, for all the circling around?
We asked, we asked that question.
We did, last time.
They, they haven't really.
Got it.
And, 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 you know, I, I think, from my point of view, I understand economics are important, and feasibility of making the, the building work are important. But if, if you're at that tipping point where you can't lose one or two beds to accommodate a different architectural style that would reduce the, the overall bulk and mass of the building, I'm, I'm sorry. It has nothing to do with how the facility is being used, it's just that it's in a neighborhood that this is a huge building. Any other comments for the applicant?
I think the only thing that I wanted to add was to maybe look at the possibility of increasing the buffer on the north end of the property so that adequate landscaping can go in there other than just a, a side obscuring fence and a row of arbor vida, which is what I'm expecting to see. And I don't mean to be flip about that, but that's usually what happens when we see a buffer. And I don't really think that's a buffer. My idea of a buffer is multiple species of actual habitat trees that are native and, and native species that grow to a height that is, that actually acts as a meaningful buffer between a use like this and a residential use.
Well, you remember, I'm not a big fan of the arbor vida.
Well, it, it all comes back full circle, but.
Well, and there's only so much you can do with 10 to 13 feet of set.
It's just not very much there.
Is the site obscuring fence a solid board fence, or it's chain-linked with flats, or what is, what is it proposed to be?
But that's really what we want to see.
On the plan, it's proposed to be a cedar fence.
Cedar fence, board-on-board?
Mm-hmm.
Other questions, comments?
Do you need any more clarification from us about what it is we're looking for and what we want?
No, I think we understand, especially when it comes to the architectural style of the building, the applicant will have to make, I mean, I don't know what their magic number is for making the building pencil, but, you know, scaling the building down is really depending on, on a big factor of that, as, as you said, if it.
Well, I think Charles did say there's a way to do the massing that can make it not appear as large as it is. And I think, again, what, when I, let's see, where's the presentation? Could you go back to the?
Well, I, I don't think we need to solve the design problem, I think we've made our, our comments, so
No, you're right, excuse me.
I think those are our concerns, and if, if, you know, we'll just have to take that under consideration as, as we move ahead. You have anything else to add? Okay. So, at this time, do we have people from the public that have signed up to speak?
You know.
Here she comes.
They're all sitting there, but they won't talk.
Oh, they got a back.
They'll nod.
They got a back, yeah.
Yeah, we've all been nodding, haven't we?
You're not saying you're the only brave one.
A spokesperson is quite all right.
We don't bite.
Right.
I know.
And we'd rather hear something once with lots of nods than eight times the exact same thing.
Your, your Judy?
Can they clap for me too?
No, no. No, please don't do that.
Nods and thumbs up, and we'll call it good.
I'm Judy Klein. I live right directly across from this proposal on Amanda Court and Netzel. My house was built in 1974, so it definitely, architecturally, does not match what this new plan is. And as far as the tree cutting, I watched for several days of all the trees being cut down, trees that were not supposed to be cut down, because they weren't even on their property. So we've been going through this for several months now. But my main concern is the parking. If you've got 31 units, and you've got seven spots, staff has got to park someplace. Visitors, I know what their recommendation was before that they submitted, is that there would only be three visitors. is that there would only be three visitors for the daytime and evening. Um, with thirty-one people, I don't see that happening, that there's gonna be that few. And if you're gonna enlarge, I mean, if you're gonna widen Amanda Court and you're gonna put parking on both sides of the street, does that include sidewalks on both sides of the street? Because if it does, I got two trees you gotta cut down. And they're big, they're about forty feet up there. So that's two more trees that are gonna be cut down.
Which, which side again?
I live on, right across the street from-
Pete, can you pull up the one that's got- No, the zone, the one, yeah.
There, right there. See, no, go back one, go back one.
Back.
Right there, see that says nine, six, one?
Nine, six, one. Oh, okay.
That's my house, right there.
And there are no sidewalks.
Yeah, there are no sidewalks. So if you're gonna put sidewalks in-
They're gonna put them on the other side of the street.
Okay.
Not on your side.
But you're, but they're still gonna be parking on my side of the street. And if they can't find a spot to park back in the seven, and they can't find a, a, a spot to park on the six, on, on Amanda Court there, or on my side of the street, they're gonna be parking down in front of my house. So does that mean that I have to move my car out every morning so that they can't park there? You know, there's so many concerns about thirty-one units coming into our area with traffic.
It's beds.
I'm sorry?
Beds, not units.
Thirty-one beds, yes. Um, I know we used to have a preschool just right down the street from me. And her license got revoked, you know, as far as being there because of the traffic. And they made her move over to a church. And that was just several years ago. Uh, and she had been there for like fifteen years, fifteen, eighteen years. And she can no longer have the preschool in her home. And so we've had the parking problem before. We asked for a speed bump to be put on Amanda Court and we were denied. We were also asking for more of the yellow stripping to go down there and we were denied. And the traffic coming around from, from, uh, over here, you know, coming around the corner there on, on Netzel, that corner between where Amanda Court goes around, they use that like a speed bump, I mean, a speed, speedway. And they just come zooming around there. And now that you, they've opened up Netzel to Lawton, they come around Amanda, they come South End Road, Amanda Court, and they just zoom down Netzel. So we're gonna have traffic problems. So, that's just my main concern, is the parking. And my three minutes is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the, uh, audience that wishes to speak?
Hello, my name's Johnny Weigle, I live across the street from Judy. So of course, you know, we've had our little neighborhood meetings and we're a little bit concerned about what's going on. Um, I think, I don't know if it, there's a question I can ask to the folks going, but it's kind of about-
You asked us.
You asked us, okay. Um, it's kind of about the staffing issues. So, I work in a facilities department and it's, you know, partially residential. And it seems like between the different crews that come in, there's a lot of staff that work there, not counting the, the, or, uh, visitors and guests for the people that are there. So between, you know, and I'm just thinking like maintenance and housekeeping and I imagine there have to be some security, um, nurses. I'm just kinda concerned that, you know, if there are six or seven employees working at a time, um, the six or seven on the street, uh, they're, they're not gonna be much for anything, so, um, yeah, that's pretty much what I have.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you, thank you.
And, uh, just, I'll acknowledge all the nods out and, uh, so.
Is there anyone else?
Yep, they're coming.
Okay, people are-
They're just coming one at a time, that's, that's okay.
Judy had to break the ice.
Yeah, Judy broke the ice.
Thank you, Judy.
Dave Rochak, I live next door to Judy. And I too am concerned about the parking. I've had relatives in care centers and, uh, have gone there many times and not be able to find a parking place. And especially on holidays, uh, they tend to fill up. Because that's when everybody goes to visit their relatives. So, seven parking spaces, I don't think is enough for the staff. That's basically all I have to say, is there's, they need more parking.
More onsite parking?
On-site parking, yes.
Great. Is there anyone else that wishes to testify? Okay, seen none? We'll close the-
Wait, applicant rebuttal.
Hold on, that's right, applicant rebuttal. The applicant has an opportunity to rebut to the public testimony?
Parking issue, I, I hear-
You'll have five minutes.
Sorry, I'll say my name again, this is Petronella Donovan. Um, the parking issue, I, I see that coming up and up again. And I, you know, agree with the parking. Another thing that we have also suggested, that they can, uh, we can use our existing facility and have people walk right around the corner as far as the staff is concerned. Uh, park their vehicles at our existing facilities and then walk around the corner and, and do that. That would be another option. Another option that we were thinking about is talking to the church. If we can, you know, possibly talk to them and have, you know, us use their parking.
The church across the street?
Right, there's one, right, right across the street, um, as far as that, that goes.
I've never been, seen that church in operation, but obviously it's pre-existing because they don't have any formal parking facilities over there. I mean, I drove around the church and that's exactly what it looks like.
On Sunday night, on Sundays, they are packed.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm usually at church on Sunday, so I'm not going to, I'm not checking their church out.
And when we go to our church, we go right by there, but yeah.
Well, and that's kinda, I guess, the response to using the church's parking is, people tend to visit on the weekends when they're having services, on the holidays when they're having services. So, I'm not sure that's necessarily an option.
Maybe during the day.
I guess the question I have for Pete-
She's still rebutting, yeah, not yet.
Okay, well, it kinda really hits her question, but go for it.
Let her finish her rebuttal.
Yeah.
That was it, we just, uh, wanted to bring up the idea that joint parking situation with our existing property, they have a lot of spaces available there.
How far is that away?
It's, uh, where the gas station is on the corner of Warner Parrot and, um, South End Road.
Go down, I think, one more.
It's maybe-
Yeah, there we go.
Okay, so, uh-
I only think that might be problematic because then you're not meeting your parking requirement at that site. So how can, I mean, I, I think it's a nice idea, but how, you know, you've got an existing facility, it has parking requirements, and then if you start having people from this facility park over there, then how does that impact that facility? See, that, that's, it's kinda, you know, that's, there's that, there's a little issue there.
Yeah, you end up double counting again.
Counting, yeah. So you got this nice map here, Pete, so it's, the other place is-
Do the cursor thing.
I know, it's like so small!
Oh, that was fine.
One eighty-one.
It's right there. It's right under the P in Parrot.
Right under the P in Parrot. Okay, I see the P. Oh, okay, I found it, I found it.
Or I see, or if it's one eighty-one, it's just north.
It's under the T in Parrot.
Above the T.
Above the T, above the T, okay.
So is it within a thousand feet?
Uh, it's, I mean, if I was staff and it was raining and I had to walk away over there, I, I don't think I'd go for that.
Yeah, I'd, I'd say that's probably not a realistic option.
We'd be more than happy to provide transportation for them if that would be the case.
That's, that's even a smaller, I mean, how many beds do you have there?
We have five beds there.
You have five, yeah.
But we also live there.
Yeah, so you're, you're, yeah, you're doing that under the, a different requirement, yeah.
And we do have the parking there and we're, we-
Yeah, I think you're gonna have the same issues. People, you know, tend to visit at different times and I, I, unfortunately, Mrs. Donovan, I don't see that as a viable option, it's just a little too far away. And you, and you don't wanna be, you don't wanna be out of compliance with your current facility. And I would, I definitely would not want you to have to do, do that.
Yeah.
Any other comments to, okay?
Okay, before you leave, now that you're rebuttal, Pete?
So?
The five to seven parking, that's guidance, right? If they wanna put twelve in, they can put twelve in.
Um, normally going over the maximum would require variance.
No, why, why is it seven? That's like twenty-two percent.
Isn't it, isn't it actually seven to ten if we include the office?
Include the office as an additional use, not part of the assisted living use. You could probably fudge that and get it. Yep.
Yeah, so that would, ten would be better.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah. But I, I, I'd still come back to our code being five to seven for a thirty-one bed facility? That's twenty-two percent. That doesn't even meet parking requirements for a commercial. We base the parking standards off of engineered standards and I T manual. Uh, we'd be certainly happy to revisit it, but at this point, this is the standard that we have.
We know how we feel about the I T manual.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you, also, appreciate it.
Okay, so now we'll close the public testimony.
Do we have a, uh, an option to close the hearing or continue the hearing? How does that work, I'm not sure.
You can, has to have the he, hearing continued if you wanna have time to look at, at drawings and, and maybe come back with the, with answers to this.
I was gonna ask for it, anyway.
I would like to close it, is what I would like.
Oh, so you'd like to close this and have us make a decision?
Right, your, your option would be if-
I wouldn't recommend that.
If we close the public hearing to new, uh, testimony, you won't be able to bring any additional, uh, evidence.
And we're suggesting you bring some additional evidence.
So if-
It'll help us make a better decision.
The option is the right.
Yes, they do.
What they'd like to submit. The applicant could finish up their testimony tonight, say the application before you is what I've submitted. Or they could request a continuance and request an extension on it.
You guys like a couple minutes?
Can I do that, I, I mean, I have a person goes. All right, thanks.
This is not a, not an attorney's thing, this is ordinary people, so we understand.
The attorney's over there.
Yeah. Do we wanna recess for five minutes?
Yeah, I think we should.
Let's take a five-minute recess.
Okay, the record's still open, just for the, for the record.
Okay.
It's cold?
It's cold.
I brought my sweatshirt, that's why. Normally, I'm sitting in the draft.
It's hot out, though.
You don't need to fill.
Yes, he does.
He didn't speak.
I haven't spoken yet.
So we'll, we'll reconvene and go forward, so.
What happened to our screens?
I, I don't know. Flip it back and forth and go to the pack.
I'm blue.
Yeah, me too.
Are you, are you on pause?
There we go.
There we go.
Oh, thank you.
I didn't pause it.
Uh-oh. Okay.
So I, I guess the question is whether you would like to have us close the public hearing and have us consider the matter this evening or ask for continuance.
For more information to help us make a better decision.
Right, and what I want a clarification, maybe not, I'm not understanding. If we do close the hearing, what does that mean for us? I want to be clear on that.
That means we'll be making a decision this evening.
We're yeah.
Based on the information we have before us.
If the, so the commission will make a decision tonight. They'll either approve it with the conditions recommended by staff, approve it with additional conditions, or they'll deny the application. The planning commission then, we mail out the notice of decision. There's two weeks from the date of the notice of decision for any party who participated to appeal the decision to the city commission if they so choose. If the application is denied, the record is closed, no new information. If the application is denied, no new application that's substantially similar can be submitted for at least one year.
If it doesn't close, there's a hundred and twenty days? I don't understand that, that.
Under state law, we're required to issue our final decision, which means all appeals, potential appeals to the city commission within a hundred and twenty days of the application being deemed complete. The applicant, it's on the, the onus on the applicant to request an extension of the hundred and twenty day. Otherwise, we end up, it's being called mandamus. Not allowed to just drag applications out indefinitely. We have to issue a decision within a certain time period. You know, I'd have trouble recommending, you know, accepting the continuance without an extension just because of the issues it puts us in with appeals, because we have to go through the notice again and schedule of hearing and whatnot. Usually with, with an extension, with a continuance request, we usually, the applicant usually grants, requests an extension of the hundred and twenty day equivalent.
Tony, is your microphone, is your microphone on?
Yes. Usually requests an extension of the one hundred and twenty day equivalent to the time for the additional hearing, which wasn't planned.
As a, as a point of clarification, would that hundred, we, would that mean that we would not come before the hearing for another hundred and twenty days, or would we?
No, no, no. So if you, let's say, let's say the next hearing was in thirty days, usually the request would be to extend the hundred and twenty day by thirty days, equivalent to the time to get to the next hearing.
For example, the hundred and twenty days runs in your application on November seventh right now. So if you thought, and your team thought, that the architects would take thirty days to come back and respond to some of the comments you've heard tonight, then it would be December seventh would be the extension period, that thirty days. And that's when the city's decision would have to be made. I didn't count that exactly, but we would count out the actual thirty days.
You, but you guys do.
Real briefly, you need to state your name for the record. I understand you're a party to this, but you just need to state your name for the record.
My name is Chad Bowley.
Okay.
Down at the paper to see if that was him.
As you say, you know, the baby boomers are getting there and they're having memory issues, so sometimes we have to look and see who we are today.
Go ahead. If we could do our proposed response to everything that we heard from you guys tonight, in time for the next hearing, would that be available, or is that already booked, or?
It'd be, it'd be really difficult. The next hearing's on August twenty-fifth, which essentially means we have to have the staff report out the week before that. So essentially, we'd have this week for you to get responses to us, us review it, prepare a staff report. It's really not feasible.
So really, we're continuing for thir, basically a month from now?
Probably November eighth, or I'm sorry, September eighth would be the closest recommended. That would give us time for you to prepare.
Would you be able to do it in thirty days? Is thirty days enough time?
Yeah. Yeah.
We want to give you enough time to give us the information to help you, to help us make a good decision.
You know, realistically, you need to get it done, submitted to us, probably two weeks before the hearing. That gives us one week to review it, write our staff report, and then post it one week before the hearing. So once you start doing the math backwards, the weeks go by pretty quick.
We didn't, we didn't know exactly how it all works, so.
Oh, that's funny.
It's okay. It's, it's, gets a little complicated in this part, and that's why we're here to answer questions. So if you would like us to continue the public hearing and keep the record open, we would be happy to do that.
But you would need to, what Tony was saying, make a request for the continuance and couple that with a request for extending the hundred and twenty day decision period by an equivalent amount of time.
And the al, the alternate option of asking to have it closed, are, are we allowed to ask that with conditions of saying, you guys condition how many part, more additional parking spots you would like us to add, or, you know, shifting the building away from the north down to the south?
No, we, we, we can only work with the.
Information.
Information that's been supplied in your application. And if, if you want to explore alternatives to the design that we have before us, you would need to come back. That would be considered new evidence. So we, we would not be able to act on new evidence that we don't have before us tonight. So that, that would require continuance to supply, for you to submit that, if, if you were going to make revisions to your plan.
Definitely want to comply with everything. I don't want to be a sore spot in the neighborhood, that is for sure. We want to comply, but, you know, we also have a deadline, too, that we have to meet. And I did not realize that this is where we're going to be here tonight. And definitely, the architect part of it is not going to be an issue. If that's what we need to change, I don't have a problem with that. The addition of the parking, that I don't have an issue with that either. We want to comply with that, but, you know, putting us another thirty, sixty days out is, is huge for us. And so that, that's kind of where we're at. So just so you know what we'll have to deal with.
We, we understand that. That's why we were, that's why we asked for it the last time.
We, we, we just misunderstood. We didn't understand that that's what you were, that you were asking for us to, to do that, so it was, we're sorry about that, but.
Well.
I don't think, let us know how they would vote if we say close this, so.
Here, here's, here's, I guess, the thing you need to balance. You have a business model that you need, you have a timeline you're dealing with on that. I understand that. Can it move thirty days and have, you know, and, and can you still make that work? And also, you know, and use that thirty days to answer some of our concerns that we have. Parking, trees, buffer zone.
Design.
Okay. Well, will that work versus the worst alternative that could happen to you, which is you want it closed tonight, we vote no, and you don't get to bring this back to us for a year? That's the worst versus, well, not necessarily the best, but that's the, the difference between, you know, we could say, you want it closed, and we vote, good enough. And you're off and running, and you've saved yourself thirty days. So I'm just, that's, I, I just want you to understand.
Appreciate it, Damon. And we definitely want to work with you guys. I mean, I'm not here to say, oh, my goodness, no, I don't want to change the style of my building, and no, I don't, that's not what we're here for. And that's what makes it so hard, because we pushed it off so much, and we have our deadlines.
So, so where we're at right now is, I, I hate to put it to, you, you need to make a decision right now whether you want us to vote on this tonight, or you want to bring new evidence back to us. Those are really the two options you have.
More is better.
We will continue.
So you're, you're requesting thirty day continuance for a date certain of September eighth? Is that the?
And are they waiting?
And you're willing to extend the hundred and twenty day period for that thirty days?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Thank you. So I would entertain a motion from the commission based on the applicant's request.
I move that we continue this with the record open until a date certain of September eighth.
Second.
Call for the question? Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Henkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
The public hearing is extended till September eighth. Concurrent extension of the hundred and twenty day deadline. Staff will work with the applicant on getting the revisions to a timely manner.
So just so you know, the four elements are parking, buffer zone, trees, and, and the massing, perpetual design.
Building design.
Those are the four things that we raised as concerns. And if you address those, then we can make a decision on the next, correct? We can make one tonight, but.
Work, work with Pete. Pete, he knows.
He's had time to figure out what our brains are doing.
Lots of notes now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So.
So does the audience understand what just happened as well? Okay, so I make sure everybody's clear.
The, the continuance is to September eighth?
Busy night.
Yep. We made it, so we have to suffer with it. And we're bringing you along for the ride.
So Pete, we have any communications?
On this Thursday, August fourteenth, Volunteer Appreciation Night down at the end of the Oregon Trail. Hopefully, you'll be able to make that.
Fun.
And then, yeah, just a reminder, Willamette Falls Legacy Project land use application will be coming before the planning commission on September eighth. We're going to start an hour earlier at six, and then we're also going to, we're going to have three weekends in a row, we're going to go the, or three week, Mondays in a row, we're going to go the ninth, or I'm sorry, September eighth, September fifteenth, and September twenty-second for those hearings.
They're all starting at six? Because I just looked at my notes.
I think, I think the two, I think in the last, we'll, yeah, we're going to play it by ear a little bit, see how it's going, but.
I had talked to Christina about, because I know that the agenda will be blue, 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 blue for like three pages. So I asked, I said, you know, it would be really helpful, since we've read some of the material, could she just highlight with a star or something? Tell us what's the new material, what do we need to focus on, so that we, you know, if we've already read stuff, we don't have to read that again. So will everything be new, everything, she said everything won't be new. She said it'll be some stuff that we have seen before.
There's some stuff they've probably seen before.
Is that, is that going to take hours to do, or?
And that would just be, you know, because I'm like setting aside time and just.
It's probably mainly focused on the staff report, which is going to be pretty extensive.
More than eighty-four pages. I think Pete's holding a world record right now.
Actually, the men's center, ninety-six.
Oh, there you go. That's right. There you go. He doesn't want that title. I'm best friends with the people at Kinko's now. He says, oh, you got a meeting next week? I said, yeah.
I found that out today, so I'm not the record holder.
The, we've been meeting with the partners group, and so at our last meeting, which is the two elected officials from each of our partners and the property owner. And so staff from each of those organizations meant to kind of set up a memorandum of understanding that identifies the Riverwalk as the first public investment on the Blue Heron property out to the PGE facility. Make certain commitments and support, identifying the importance of that project, the public access, the catalytic value of that project and that investment. And then started to set out some general roles and responsibilities, such as, you know, we'll work together in identifying funds to match the five million that have been allocated through the governor's budget for that project. You know, essentially, one of them is, you know, Metro would take over the negotiations of the easement with the property owner. Oregon City would take over the long-term operation and maintenance of the facility. So just general parameters as a starting place, so that we could negotiate with the property owner and not bring back something and have somebody go, oh, well, I don't want to be a part of it because you didn't get X, Y, or Z. So we tried to get everything out on the, on the table upfront. Clackamas County held a work session last week. They voted unanimously, or four, zero, one, one abstention to support approval of the M O U. We're going to bring that to our city commission on the twentieth for support and review of it, and then the Metro will be shortly after that. They're on recess right now, they, but they'll take it up as soon as they get back as well. So that was a very positive.
Propose it, recess?
Metro.
Metro, they just, they took a little bit of time off.
Oh, Metro, oh, right, yeah, okay, yeah.
And so as soon as they're back, they'll, they'll approve that as well. So that was, that was a good sign. So Clackamas County, you know, essentially adopted that M O U as written. So a lot of work went into that. So once staff had kind of hammered it out, we took the draft M O U to the partners group meeting where each of the electeds then, and we were to submit it, and Jay Mason made it's there. So we feel it's a, it's a good guiding document to begin with.
I'm sorry, it wasn't five, zero.
Well, we're moving along.
Yeah, it's better than, better than three, two.
Yep, so, yeah, so right now, we're really focused on the land use application and the hearings, both at the planning commission and the city commission, and then, you know, identifying next steps. Essentially, we're, we're hoping we'll have this one wrapped up, and so we'll start our next phase, which will be identifying the funding for the project.
So how, how would, how would you see that meeting being structured? So will there, so are we presenting the information as the applicant, or is Mr. presenting it as the applicant, or how, I mean, it's legislative?
We're going to, we're going to present quite a bit of it.
Okay, that's what I thought.
It's not legislative, it's quasi judicial.
Oh, it's quasi, okay.
Yes. We, we investigated with the assistance of the city attorney, legislative versus quasi judicial. Since it was one property, we went the quasi judicial route. Legislative usually is encompassing multiple properties or multiple acreages, so. Most of you probably received an email. If you do have ex parte conflicts, you're certainly free to talk about the project. Just document it for us, it'd be a little bit easier. We can just enter that into the record at the hearing, and anybody can review that and question it as they see fit.
So you want anything?
Well.
Well, let me give you an example. See, I mean, I wrote it down.
If it's relevant to the approval, if you're, if we're talking, you know, I mean, you got to use some discretion here.
What I did was, I know of a party in Oregon City who's been sending me regular emails about when the hearing's going to start, when the hearing's going to start. So when I got your notice.
I'm sorry, we need, we're not picking everybody up on the mics. We need to get a little closer to the mics.
When I got our notice, I emailed that person saying, did you get the notice from the city about the hearing schedule? That's all I said. The person responded back, yes. So I wanted to make sure she had gotten it, since she's been asking me that question for the last six months, and I, you know.
I don't think you need to disclose that.
Yeah, there was, there was no more, there was no.
When's the next meeting?
Meeting, yeah, there was no more conversation about it. And she said she had received that, and I said, great, because now you're on, you know what the schedule is, you know when to be here, and so my, my job is done now. I don't have to keep, keep saying, we don't, aren't having a meeting.
Just, just to clarify, for, for my sake anyway, do we have a meeting next Monday, or it's two weeks?
Twenty-second, I believe. 22nd, I believe.
You could have, you could have a meeting next week if you want.
Okay, so 22nd, and then September...
August 25th is the next, yeah, two weeks.
Okay, and then September, we've got the 8th?
15th.
15th?
And 25th.
And the 25th.
Next week is when we're going to go try that new beer place?
8:15, 22nd of September.
And what, we're at 6 o'clock?
On the 8th.
On the 8th, and most likely 6 o'clock on the 15th.
6 o'clock on the 15th.
Did I hear we're meeting on the 25th as well?
Yes.
Yeah, that's our normal meeting.
Yeah, so on the 22nd, at this point, we're still at 7:00.
Right now, unless we need to change something, we'll just see how things are lining up.
We could take turns bringing potluck. I nominate Bob to bring the first...
He volunteered.
Bob volunteered?
Yeah, and then after that would be Tom.
You're not here to defend yourself, right?
Tom, yeah, Tom would be second.
That's right.
I got four boxes of Girl Scout cookies left over in the room, frozen thin mints for the way...
Hey, I have some, too, not four, though, I'm only down to two.
I used to have a whole case, but the kids found it.
Just the, the Portland Men's Center, I think the deadline for the appeal is Wednesday, we haven't received anything to date, so we'll, we'll update you. Oh, it's tomorrow, I'm sorry, so it's Tuesday.
I would not, I would be shocked if they...
I noticed their property up for sale.
Heard that here.
There's a Realtor sign on it.
There's a realty sign on it?
Yeah.
Doesn't surprise me.
Put it on the market, bottom up, that means.
That's all the updates I have right now.
And how's Laura doing?
Final question?
Let's, got a motion to adjourn?
Is this a world record?
We're adjourned. No.
Oh, that one time, that's right, okay.